All right, so City Hall 101 graduates are actually getting kind of a live presentation tonight. First time that I've been able to do this, so they got to see some live TV. So if you haven't taken City Hall 101, it's an incredible program. We learn all about the city. They all give it, just raising it, you know, round of applause every year that we do it. I want to just thankfully greet everyone here tonight and all the candidates. Thank you for putting your name out there. I know it's really hard work to campaign and put yourself out there and listen to concerns, but I just want to personally thank everyone who has chosen to run for school board or any elected office for being willing to serve your community. For those that are watching and listening, thank you so much for being in tune with what's happening here in the city and your school district, asking the questions. You know, as elected officials, you know, the way that we learn, the way that we get better, the way that we build a better community is to hear and listen from our residents. A lot of time in election cycles, new things come to light, you know, and we learn from those as well. So on behalf of certainly our city council and our residents and City Hall 101, who is with me here today.
I've done a, watched a fair number of these forums that you guys have done with Frisco Chamber and with other organizations as I was getting ready for this. So I realized you've answered a lot of these questions in the past, but for those who are joining us for this recording and those who will watch this later with early voting underway here, I was hoping we could really dive into a little more of these controversial topics and then what you guys think are the biggest challenges for the district over the next 20, 25 minutes or so here. Let's start with one that we're seeing everywhere, and that is something you guys have talked about a lot at Frisco ISD, teacher retention. I want to start back and go the opposite way with place three here. Teacher turnover obviously is happening everywhere. Frisco ISD is one of the best districts in North Texas. So it would lead someone like me to think that, you know, maybe you'd leave a massive district like Dallas ISD where someone can get lost. But if you're at Frisco ISD, much smaller, it's got an A rating from the state. Why in the world are teachers leaving? I know it's a fraction of them that are leaving and people are leaving every industry right now. But Dustin, let me start with you on this. Why do you think they're leaving? And if elected, what in the world could you do about that?
Yeah, I mean, I think teachers leave for a host of reasons, just like any employee leaves the company. I mean, I think it can be health. I can, I think it can be finding a different district that works better for you, that's closer to your kids. I think a lot of our teachers are, have school age children and they want to go to the, they want to work in the same district that their kids go to. And so I think that's some of it. I think some of it also is misleading in the sense that I think Texas calculates their turnover rate for teachers based on if they leave the teaching profession. So in Frisco, where we've got a fast growing district and teachers are promoting to assistant principal or principal or student services coordinator, that's counted as turnover. And so I don't think it's necessarily easy to say Frisco is doing something wrong and that's why teachers are leaving. I think they leave for a host of reasons. We're, we're doing better than most districts in the state, but how do we fix that? You know, I, I think we've got to talk to them. I think we've got to figure out, you know, as an employment lawyer, I talk about your, your managers or your frontline kind of business face. I think that happens with, with schools, your campuses, your principals, your assistant principals. That's the frontline. And so we've got to make sure that we're training our principals and assistant principals, that they're creating a culture. They've got a work-life balance. They're doing the things that are keeping teachers happy. I think we've got to go talk to legislators and we've got to do a good job of advocating to say, hey, we've got to lighten the load on our teachers and the things that we're giving them to do outside of the classroom. But also, I think we also have to be willing to fight back and push back on politicization and say, hey, we're not going to politicize our school and our teachers and say, hey, we're going to call out our teachers for what they teach and how they teach their classroom and the things that they do. Because it's, it's in my mind, a little bit silly to say, we're going to attack teachers on one hand, but on the same hand, we're going to say we're fighting for teachers. And so I think we have to truly fight for teachers in the sense that we fight against the, the politics being brought into it, but fight against legislators who want to put more on the schools.
Dustin, let's move things around here too, so we make sure we get the voices from, from other folks. Stephanie, I've heard you say that you have talked to plenty of teachers and that this is an issue. Dustin's suggesting it's not as big of an issue. Maybe there's classification problems. Is this an issue? And if you're elected, how in the world would you address it? Let's try to do this in like 90 seconds or so if we can. I realize you don't want to start a, you know, stopwatch when you begin, but if you could just keep it brief, we'll move around to everyone.
Sure, no problem. I think this is the biggest issue we face in Frisco ISD. I heard a couple of weeks ago that we have an elementary school that's losing 18 teachers. That is massive and that's an issue and we can't continue at this pace. Frisco ISD lost over 600 teachers last year. The exact number was 618 depending on when you time it. And that's a crisis in my opinion. I understand it's a national issue, but a lot of our issues, a lot of our teachers are leaving for Prosper ISD or they're leaving for other districts. I have put out a proposal to do a third party confidential engagement survey. I do this for a living. I actually run the engagement survey for my company, so I know what's involved. We need to make sure the teachers have a safe environment in order to give their feedback, not only their comments about their work environment, but also asking them quantitative questions such as, you know, are you planning to leave Frisco ISD in the next two years? On a scale of one to 10, how likely are you? Things like that. There's a lot of things that can be done. Once you get the results back from that survey, then what you want to do is pick the top two or three pain points that the teachers have and work with the leadership to work on. And this is what I do for a living. I've done it for many organizations, large and small, and I know it can work here in Frisco ISD. We want to keep our Frisco teachers, our amazing Frisco teachers here in Frisco.
Let me bring in Kelly Carthick on this. Kelly, is this an issue or is this just the regular turnover that any organization would have?
Yes, it's a problem going on nationally throughout our state and locally. But Frisco is Frisco because of our top status is with teachers and the destination place for, to go to for your kids to get a really good education. So how do we remain competitive and attractive and retain these teachers? I've been thinking about ideas about possibly a sliding scale tuition reimbursement program. I don't think teachers should have to work two jobs. They are talking about smaller classroom sizes. They're also talking about being fully funded, so they're not digging in their pockets to pay for snacks and decorations and art supplies. I know there's been concerns about bereavement, you know, when they lose an immediate family member, they get three days off. What if we expanded that to five days off? So they have a full week off to try to get, you know, their personal life back together. Some teachers are interested in aides to assist them in the classroom, maybe shared aides amongst classrooms. I know that also there's after-school clubs and there's a lot of pressure on these teachers to sponsor those clubs. How about talking about getting the parents that are experts in the community vetted and background to take care of some of these clubs? Also, the salary is something we need to look at. If we're losing teachers to nearby communities, maybe we need to re-look at those salaries. Thank you.
Marvin? No, you're still on mute, sir. There we go.
Okay. I don't understand how we could look at losing 1,600 teachers over the last three years and think it's not a serious problem. You know, I come from a business background and my job is, well, just let's throw money at them. But when I talk to teachers, money is not the primary problem. Everybody would want a little more money, but that's not the primary problem. The primary problem is actually administrative burdens. It's all the extra work they have to do. But most teachers got into teaching to teach. They enjoy teaching. They enjoy seeing our students develop. But with the, with the heavy burdens of, of, of all the administrative burdens that they had, that is causing them to rethink being here in Frisco and going to schools with lighter burdens. We accepted S R funds and as a result of accepting those funds, we even have more burdens that are on the teachers. We need to really look out and see what is it going to take for us to treat our teachers right and to keep them here. And one of the, the main thing again is taking off the administrative burden.
Natalie, you've talked quite a bit about spending time in the classroom, being a teacher and working, you know, multiple positions in education. What do you think the issue is? And is this something that rises up to board level where the board had, you know, should address it?
Sorry, I had you, I had myself on mute. Well, first of all, we actually have an 11.7%, 11.7% of our turnover vote, was our turnover rate this year, which is not unusual in most years. It should have been higher given COVID and all of the things that come with it. But yes, we are losing more teachers in education this year than any other year. And I think one of the biggest issues is politics. We have allowed, we have allowed politics into education for a couple of decades and it has, it is at a heightened point where we've got legislation coming down from the federal level and from the state level. And there's a lot of unintended consequences that come with that. HB 4545 is one of them where if a parent's child, or if a, yes, a child's parents decide to let them opt out of STAR, they, they are required to take 30 hours of tutorials over the summer and the responsibility then lies on the teacher to make that happen during that teacher's summer unpaid. That is not okay. There are a lot of things that are going on. The pressures just continue to get pushed down. And I think that the first thing that we need to do is figure out a way to lighten the load. For our, for our staff, we've got a lot of changes that go on and it needs to be one thing at a time.
Go Paul, let me move on to you here. I've heard multiple people say lighten the load. There's administrative, you know, burdens on top of teachers here. You've, you've been on the school board, you're running for reelection. Has the board not addressed this? Has this not come up before the board?
Board is definitely looking at the, the situation. You know, we are all aware about the great resignation that's happening. And then, you know, we are also addressing it, you know, in fact, during the COVID and then later on, we have given two CARE stipends and then we have increased our annual incentive, retention incentives that went off in January. And then we are also providing wellness coordinators because of the pressures that are being added to them. So we've added a wellness coordinator so that, you know, the teachers' mental health and then, you know, their support system is also strengthened. So again, you know, just to add to what Natalie said, you know, our percentage is 11.7, whereas region 10 is slightly over 15% and then Texas is a slightly over 14.3%. So it's not that, you know, we are, you know, we are content with what's happening. We have to continuously focus to see that, you know, if we are adding anything on top of teachers, burden, we also need to look at things that can be removed from them so that, you know, they are not continuously under pressure to perform and, and at the same time, take care of the mandates and other things that are coming from the state level.
Angela, where are you on this position?
Yeah, um, I actually, I think it's a really big deal. And from the conversations I've had with several teachers, the feeling I've gotten is that we're going to have a significantly higher turnover this year than what we've seen in past years. And so that's concerning to me and I, I hope it's not true, but I don't know. But from talking to teachers, that's what it sounds like is going to happen. And so we have to act quickly and, and make corrections now. I, I think we have to start implementing things now in order for them to even be in place for the next school year, if we are going to have any chance of salvaging the teachers that are still remaining for the next school year. So is it a legislative issue? Is it a FISD issue? The answer is yes. It's all of the above, right? But, but where we have the most control, and not saying we have no influence over legislation, but we obviously have the most control over the district specific issue. So we have to at least make sure we're really focused there. I, I hear that very, very frequently about the overburdening of teachers. I have started to dig since I've heard things about, you know, is it the politicizing? Is it, do you feel like you're constantly needing to be on your guard because of what parents are saying out there? And so I've started to ask that question specifically because I've been curious and just kind of leaving it open, not trying to lean them one way or the other on their answer. And they say, no, that's kind of, I wouldn't say that's it. That, that would be like at the bottom. And I'm not saying that no teachers have had that experience, just the ones I've been talking to. I'm sure there are teachers out there that have seen that problem as well, but the bigger things that they talk about have more to do with just really feeling under supported, maybe not having enough of the paras or whatever that they need or just the culture of support and, and being overburdened.
Angela, let's, I have a whole list of things that I'd love to ask you guys about. Time never permits. So let, let, let's do it like this. Let's start back with place three. I have a lot of very specific things. I'm curious where you guys stand on, but I'm curious what you guys think that most of you didn't, a few of you said exactly what you want to do in your opening statements. But the biggest challenges over the next 24 months and Dustin, we're going to start with you in place three and we'll move back up to Jane.
Yeah, biggest challenge in the next 24 months? I mean, I think we've got a couple of things. So I mean, mental health is a huge issue and that's, and that's mental health for everyone in the district, meaning teachers and students. Everyone is experiencing it for a variety of different reasons. I mean, COVID is the, is the main reason that a lot of students and teachers are experiencing that. Just the, the, the nature of COVID and how it threw everyone's normal lives and cycles out of whack. And so I think that creates it. So we've got some bullying issues and some, and some student outburst issues that are kind of the, the natural result of that, not, not an okay result, but the natural result. But for teachers as well. And so I think we've got to address the mental health that's going on in, in our classrooms on both sides. And as, as, as Go Paul said, I mean, the, the district is focused on this wellness coordinator. I think that's probably got to be expanded at some extent, or to some extent. But I think also, you know, I was reading something the other day that the state of Texas ranks as one of the lowest states when it comes to addressing mental health and, and having the right professionals in the schools for addressing the mental health of our students. We just don't fund it the right way. And so I think that's a major issue that's going to have to be addressed.
Stephanie, same question. What's paramount for you over the next 24 months if you're elected?
Sorry, my mute button's acting funny right now. You know, I think, I guess I'm a little stuck on the teacher retention issue because it really is, I think, one of the biggest issues, if not the biggest issue that we need to solve for. And the other candidates have identified some of the issues that, that I have heard from the teachers that I have spoken to regarding why they're leaving. But one that hasn't been addressed in a lot of detail is the behavior issue. I've had two kindergarten teachers at totally separate schools share with me that they'll be leaving Frisco ISD and won't be returning in the fall because of behavior issues in their classroom in kindergarten. And that's very concerning to me. And I've heard that from other teachers as well, not just elementary school teachers, but also middle and high school teachers that they feel like the behavior issues have escalated and that they're not addressed properly and that these things occur over and over and over again. So I think, you know, if we want to retain our teachers, we've got to work on that as well. So I just wanted to add that piece. The other thing that I think is, is a bit of a concern is just the inability to staff in some of the positions, specifically in the paraprofessional area. There's quite a few openings. Last I checked, I think there were over 50 openings. And I've heard from teachers and from parents how that's impacting their students. So for example, maybe part of a special education student's plan have a certain number of hours a week with the paraprofessional staff member. And because of the shortage, they're combining, you know, more than one, one student with the same paraprofessional aide, which isn't part of the plan. It's supposed to be the one-on-one and that there's a lot of issues in that as well. So those are, that's another issue I really think we need to solve for immediately. Because like I said, I've heard from special education teachers and parents, but that's an area that needs to be addressed.
Marvin, let me ask you, two, two biggest problems or two biggest challenges that Frisco ISD faces over the next 24 months? In your opinion, what are those? Still on mute.
I'd have to say teacher retention is at the top of the list, but it really kind of goes hand in hand with another issue that we have. And that's the testing and the way we test our kids in the school district. It's not uniform among all the schools. I'll give you an example. My son is an excellent student. I'm going to brag about him for a little while. Straight A student, he's always been, he's done great. He's a junior, he's done great on the SATs, like a 1450. I mean, he's just really a good student, does everything right the first time. However, the testing in the district is not uniform across lines. So what we have is retesting in the district. Someone can take a test and maybe they get a fail and then they can retake the test. And maybe one school says you can only retest to 85. Well, and you can only do it once. Another school might say you can retest to 85, but you can take it multiple times. Other schools say, hey, you can take the retest and you can test up to 100, but you can only take it one time. Other schools say, hey, you can take it multiple times and test up to 100. And that puts, first of all, it puts a lot of burden on the teachers because they have to sit for tests more. But only, also it takes away from our excellence. We don't have any way of distinguishing between a child or student that's making 100 the first time and doing really well and one that's making 100 after taking a test several times. And that's a problem in the area.
Marvin, I appreciate that. I do want to move on to Kelly. Kelly, you've listed a number of things every time we call on you. Where, where would you rank the, the top two? What are the top two in your opinion that really need to be addressed if you were elected?
Aside from the number one of teacher retention issues, something I'm really interested in is, we've heard about people interested in the mental health portion of, you know, with teachers and students. But I'm also concerned how they fell behind academically during COVID. The kids are feeling, I think, the mental pressure because they also fell behind academically. Their grades are not the same, their scores are lower across the board and they're feeling that pressure. So that's something I would like to see help in both of those areas. And also the communication between FISD and the community is lacking. You know, recently we, we removed the non-agenda items out of the public comment section of our school board meetings and now we have a community input night. And the problem is with that, this is my opinion, is when parents, parents have the need to communicate with their school board. And when they go to these community input nights, they stop going to the school board meetings as much and then become less informed about what the real issues are and what's happening. And my proposal is that we expand the FISD school board meetings to two meetings a month, just like on the city of Frisco. We're big enough, we've got 77 schools, we have 66,000 kids. How about we have two meetings a month, cut the work in half and return the non-agenda items back to the school board for parents to be able to continue communicating with, with the trustees and superintendent?
All right, Natalie, if you're reelected, what are the top two things you'd like to accomplish in another term?
Well, first of all, we've said it all night long, is the teacher retention. And I don't know. Everybody keeps talking about raising salaries and giving more incentives financially, which we do every single year, at least every single year that I've been on the board. And I would like to be able to continue that. We also need to figure out a way to make the cost of living for teachers a little bit better here in Frisco. It's very expensive to live here and to work. And most teachers, when they are leaving, are leaving to either be closer to home or they're leaving the profession or they're staying home with a baby. We can't, we can't win with a baby. The baby's always going to win. But along with the mental health and the behavior in the classroom, those two things go hand in hand with teachers leaving the classroom. And kids haven't been in class for two years. Kindergarteners leaving, kindergarten teachers leaving. I mean, kindergarteners coming back after not having any schooling ever in the middle of the year with a class that's already established. That is going to be extremely stressful for any situation. And we've got second graders who had never been in the classroom. It's been a tough year. It has been hard on our staff. It's been hard on our families. It's been hard on our superintendent. We want to make sure that we get back to a place where we've got a level of respect within the classroom, within the culture of education and make sure that we get back to a place where education is respected. In the next couple of years, as Kelly mentioned with the communication, it's resonating with me that we need to communicate better. I do not think that adding an extra school board meeting is, is the right direction to go if we're saying that we need to lighten the load for our staff. That's adding one more extra thing for them when we've already got meetings throughout the week. We've got meetings throughout the, the month. And if we're trying to lighten the load, we need to stop trying to add so many things to it. We've got to respect.
Natalie, let's, let's keep, let's keep moving around. You're, you're over two minutes, if that's okay.
Oh, my apologies.
That's all right. Time flies on these. Angela, same question for you. Top, top two issues for you.
Top two? Okay, well, we already talked teacher retention, so I won't go into that anymore. I, I didn't, I guess yet to talk about my solutions there. I would love to see a teacher committee at the district level that's just teachers. I'd love to see us increase pay raises because you only make, if you're in FISD for 10 years as a teacher, you make 10% more than what you made coming in. That's crazy, right? So things like that. There's a few other things, but I'll move on to my other items since we've talked about teachers a whole bunch, which is that communication piece with the public. I think that sometimes we don't necessarily want more communication. We just want better communication, right? So, you know, to, when we took the public comments time in the, in the general board meeting and we took that down from five minutes and, and made it down to just one to two minutes, that sent, I think, a really loud message, maybe not what the message that the board wanted to send, but that was the message that the public received, which was we are being cut out and our voices are not wanting to be heard by the people that we elected to represent us. So there's that. Also, you know, a couple of years ago, we added 10 minutes to our, to our school day. Everyone said, oh, it's just 10 minutes, no big deal. But there were some parents that were very upset about it. And regardless of where you stand on the issue, I just kept wondering, why on earth did we not get a survey on this? This could have been so easy, you know, because maybe, maybe high schoolers, they're great to add that minute, the extra time on, but maybe elementary school kids, not so much because we already added another 10 minutes just a couple of years before that. So things with like that and rezoning, bringing parents in more and actually going after their input instead of just reacting to it when we finally get in.
Angela, thank you. Go Paul, if you're reelected, top two things you'd tell voters that you would do?
Yeah, a couple of things. First is, you know, definitely to handle the learning loss that has happened to the students during the pandemic and also the mental health, that's one. And then the other major thing is handling the growth. When other school districts are adding around 500 students, we are adding around 2,000 students. So, you know, these are the two things that I would like to focus on. So a little bit deeper on the first ones that I've said about learning laws and then the mental health. What has happened in two years cannot be fixed just like that. So there has to be a continuous monitoring on how we are addressing the learning loss. Ensure that the teachers are provided additional training so that, you know, they will identify if a student needs, suppose a third grade student is there. Maybe a second grade lesson needs to be taught too, so that, you know, the, the students are catching up after what they have gone through the pandemic. And also the, from the mental health standpoint, ensure that, you know, ethos program and others are, you know, being provided so that, you know, students will get additional, you know, support that is needed. So these are the two things. And then from the managing the growth standpoint, we have a couple of schools opening next year, an elementary and then a high school. Followed, following that, we have an intermediate school and then a middle school coming up. So we need to ensure that, you know, we are taking care of these things. Plus very quickly, with the great resignation happening, we need to work with legislators to see if they can give some, some sort of leeway on how we'll be able to hire more teachers and partner with universities also, so that, you know, additional training programs can be staggered. They can just join after initial year and then, you know, they can complete their training while they're teaching.
We've talked a little bit about the politicization of education and I'd be remiss if I didn't ask this as a journalist, but Stephanie, let me, let me ask a couple of questions of you. You were on Glenn Beck the other day and congratulations on that appearance. Not too many school board candidates make, you know, news like that. But you said a couple of things that, that really struck me. I want to give you an opportunity to clarify this, if, if this is where you stand or not. Last Thursday to Mr. Beck, you said that academics are falling off a cliff at Frisco ISD. But then I go look up on Frisco ISD's website and the TEA website and Frisco gets a state accountability rating of A, the attendance rate is 96.6, the four-year graduation rate is 99.4, STAR results, regardless of how you feel about STAR, it's still 88% meeting state standard. Is that falling off a cliff that you were talking about? And you're still on mute, please Stephanie. There you go.
So I am very concerned about the direction of the academics in Frisco ISD. Because I have a 12th grader and a fifth grader, I have seen the difference and, and in my opinion, this has declined and I know a lot of other parents have the same concerns. And so we have, and Marvin spoke to some of these issues earlier about the retesting and the no homework. And I don't think we're setting our kids up for success when we allow them to retest over and over again. And I think that that doesn't cause them to learn what it is they need to learn. And I'll just give you one example. My daughter is taking a dual credit class for Collin College. And when she had her first quiz, there were several other students that went up to the professor and said, when is the retest? And the, the professor looked at them and said, this is not Frisco ISD. And my daughter came home and she was upset because she, you know, she felt badly about that. And she had testified and didn't need to rethink it. But I'm hearing these issues from parents over and over again that they're concerned about the academics. There's also a lot of time, you know, on Chromebooks and not as much lecturing. And I do think that, you know, these issues are of concern. I feel like my kids are not learning as much as they did in the first, when we first moved to Frisco ISD. Even my fifth grader, the, the education for her is very different. in the first, when we first moved to Frisco ISD. Even my fifth grader, the, the education for her is very different than it was. And I do think, yes, we still have good test scores. We'll see how they are this year, but I think it's really the experience of the student, not necessarily how the test scores look, you know, to the outside world. I can just tell you, as a nine-year parent, I'm very concerned about where the academics are going and the lack of rigor that I see. You know, there's no final exams, things like that, but I just think we can do better.
Stephanie, I want to bring Marvin in just, just a second before we have to let you guys go, just a couple of moments. I do want to ask you one other thing, though. In that same interview, you alleged that Frisco ISD is teaching critical race theory. I, I know that you know that CRT is illegal in Texas. A legislature passed a bill last year the governor signed at June 15th of 2021. Are you alleging, or did you allege that Frisco ISD is still breaking the law? And if so, have you reported that to the Attorney General or any other law enforcement?
Is that for me or for Marvin?
That was for you, Stephanie.
Okay, I did not, I did not say that Frisco teaches CRT. I said that there are CRT-related assignments within Frisco ISD, and I don't have a lot of time, because I think, as I mentioned, I have to, I have another commitment at eight. But
But is, let me clarify that. Do you, do you think Frisco ISD in any form or fashion is breaking the law of CRT, of teaching CRT or assigning CRT?
Well, the law is, you know, mostly relates to just social studies. So I'll share one assignment that occurred in one of our high schools, because it's illegal to teach it in social studies. But what the assignments that I have been hearing about that have been shared with me by parents and teachers actually have set some assignments as well. Those are, were in typically ILA, language arts, sometimes Spanish, sometimes other, other classes. So critical race theory is a theory Marvin explains is better than me, so I'll let him do it. But it's, it's a college-level course. It's a theory. I have never asserted that Frisco ISD is teaching CRT, but there's one thing that occurred in our, in one of our high schools in the fall that I will say I disagree with, and you can call it critical race theory, you can call it whatever you want, and it's called a privilege walk, where we stand up all the students, and we ask them to step forward or step back based on their race, socioeconomic status, mental health, et cetera. So that was an assignment that students were asked to do at one of our high schools, and I don't think that's the right thing to do. I don't think that should ever have occurred. I think the impact on students of being asked to step forward or back based on things that they can't control, like race, is wrong.
Marvin, Stephanie, thank you for the time there. Marvin, let me ask you the same question there. You, you've mentioned critical race theory a few moments ago. Is it being taught? Is it being assigned? Is it in any form or fashion in Frisco ISD? Because it is illegal in the state of Texas. Do you think it is in Frisco ISD?
Yeah, thanks for the question. That's a very good question. I don't allege that the course in CRT is being taught in Frisco ISD. I never have. What I say is we need to stop CRT-influenced education. In other words, they, we have, our educators may have taken these courses in college, and they're bringing back what they learned, and they're applying it to students in the classroom. I often show this, this picture. This is a part of curriculum that was in the district. This is a part of what I call CRT-inspired education. It shows a white person having a shorter distance to run and to be successful than a black person. A black person has all this background, all these things that are stopping him from being successful. And I submit to you that race, that, that Frisco is not a racist district. My kids are not impacted by all of these things that it says on here, Ku Klux Klan and things like that. And for us to teach our kids, my kid, that, hey, you're something less than because of your, your background in white people. Hey, you are doing great and you're an oppressor. It's, it's bad. We also have this. This is the, so these things are in our schools.
Well, you know, Marvin, let me ask you this, Marvin, because you just said that, you know, teachers going to college, they're getting their education, they're coming back to, to, you know, teach kids in Frisco ISD. Are, are these things physically happening in Frisco ISD? And if these are, if, if these students are learning from teachers, regardless of wherever they learned it from, if that's happening, why haven't you reported that to the state?
I'm not sure. That's illegal. The, the law, does the law say, don't teach CRT? Or does the law say, don't teach CRT-inspired education? What I'm saying, and what I'm asserting, is that people are, they go to college, and basically, one of the premises of CRT is that we live in a racist, we were founded on racist principles, and, and the country is, can't be really redeemed because of that. And as a result, we need to put certain things in place to take care of that racism. I assert that there's no systematic racism, no institutional racism in Frisco, and that's not only the schools, but in our institutions. And for us to teach things like the oppression of a black boy being my, my son, I think it's, I think it's, I think it does more harm than it does any good.
Does that make sense to you? No, I, I appreciate you explaining that. And Natalie, I see you holding up signs there. I'll bring you in. Dustin, I'll bring you in just a second, since I let Stephanie explain her point of view. Natalie, you're holding up signs. Go ahead and, and tell us what's going on from your perspective.
Well, I have seen that image before because Mr. Lowe used it at another forum, and I had not had, I'd never seen it before, so I didn't know that, I didn't know what, where it came from. I asked him at that forum where it was from, and he chose not to answer that specific question. I did some digging, and I found the assignment from the fall of 2020. It is from a critical analysis assignment, and it was a lot, it was accompanied by nine other political cartoons. So it showed both sides, and it, the intention of the assignment was to create or to cause the kids to think critically about each of the different cartoons and what they meant, how it made them feel, and if that cartoon made them change their perspective in their own personal beliefs. It's an assignment for a high school age group.
Natalie, thank you for that. Dustin, I, I asked Stephanie a few questions about CRT and about comments she made on Glenn Beck. And I want to give you an opportunity before we wrap things up here. I always go over, the producers are always yelling at me at the TV station for, for spending so much time, but would you like to add anything to the conversation, Dustin?
I, I would, and I, you know, I get there's a time issue, but these are also important issues, and I think it's worth dedicating the time to them. This might be one issue where Ms. Allard and I agree in the sense that she says no one from any race or any religion should have to take a step backward. And I absolutely agree with her, and that's the point of what we're talking about. They want to take CRT and twist it into this anti-diversity equity inclusion or anti-equity thing and create this argument that everything this school district is doing and everything that's wrong about this school district is because we're doing something in the name of equity. And, and you know, you mentioned Glenn Beck, but it's not just Glenn Beck, you know. Ms. Allard was on a radio program and, and made the comment she was concerned that Frisco ISD was becoming an urban school district. That's the problem. When we focus on CRT in the way that Ms. Allard and Mr. Lowe are focusing on CRT and want to sling it around like it's something that's being used against students and against parents that is irresponsible, and it's creating an environment where Ms. Allard feels comfortable to say that this district is becoming an urban school district, and she's concerned about it. And that is incredibly inappropriate and a disservice to the students in this school district. A school district that is a majority-minority school district. We have to focus on the issues that this school district faces, and we have to focus on educating our children, but making sure our children feel like they belong so that they can actually receive that education.
Kelly Carthick, you're still with us, right? I, I hope.
I'm right here waiting for my turn.
Well, go ahead. I'm resetting my clock right now. You, you get the 90 seconds or so here, too. I've given everyone else, and I see your hand up, too.
Defining critical race theory is always very difficult for most people, you know, and I, I just jotted this down today. It's a cross-disciplinary intellectual and social movement of civil rights scholars and activists who seem to examine the intersection of the, they want to examine the intersection of race, society, and law in the United States, to challenge mainstream America liberal approaches to racial justice. And I just want to say two things. One, that's a college-level description, and number two, this is a college-level class. I want to tell you that I can't tell you how many forums I've been to where we wasted so much time on CRT. It's not allowed to be taught in the schools. It's not taught in the schools. There are so many things we are not talking about because we spend half of these meetings talking about CRT that's not happening, and I just really don't even appreciate this question. It's a diversion, and we're, we're, we're wasting time here. That's my opinion.
That's why I held it to the end, and I appreciate that comment, too. But I, before I ask this, I did want to ask the priorities for everyone, but I, I definitely appreciate that. The politicization of education is, is very strong here, too. Marvin, I hit you. I hit Natalie. I want to go to place one, who's been sitting on the sidelines here for this, just for a moment. Angela and Gopaul, we're going to wrap things up with you guys. I could go for another half hour or so. My wife's probably upset in the other room. But Angela, let's bring you in first, please. You can, you can address this issue, or if, if there's something else specific, you know, separate from your closing statement, something else specific that we didn't touch on earlier, because I think you said that you didn't get a chance to add everything in there. Please address that now.
Yeah, sure. Um, why don't we talk, we'll, we'll shift gears here just for fun. Since I, you know, I am very passionate about wellness and whatnot. Why don't we talk about, I guess, future-ready learners? Okay. So this has been something that our district has pushed for a really long time, is making sure our kids are future-ready, and it's a term we hear a lot. And I think that something that's come in as part of that initiative has been a really big push to put things on to, everything on to digital platforms, more and more of utilizing iPads and Chromebooks and whatnot in the classroom. And while I absolutely think we've got a lot of really cool digital programs, and coming from a STEM background, as a scientist, I'm not anti-technology, so I don't want to give that impression, but I definitely, I've looked at a lot of the research to see, are we going the right direction with this? And I think we've gone overboard, the fact that we don't have paper textbooks anymore. I'm also a tree hugger, so it, I'm a little torn because I like that we're saving paper. But on the other hand, it's not something the science shows is, is helping our kids absorb concepts the best, okay? And so when reporting all of our testing online, all of our quizzes online, all of our textbooks, assignments, et cetera, especially at the secondary level. And we don't, so I, I put this under the umbrella of maintaining good balance. And so I think we're, we've gone, in my opinion, overboard in our use of technology, and we need to rein it in. Another place that we don't have balance is with breaks at the middle school level. So I, like I said, I advocated for two recesses at elementary. Our middle schoolers have nothing. So they don't change over the summertime between fifth and sixth grade.
Gopaul, I want to give you the final word here, sir, in our, in our regular question period that's already gone over.
Perfect. So I'll just say a couple of things and then stop. One is, you know, I love our community. It's, it's very diverse. You know, I know there's a lot of discussion about critical race and all, but had those things been really there, then, you know, I wouldn't have been in programs and facilities and evaluation committee or any other company, forget about getting elected in 2019 as a Board of Trustees. So I really love our community. I thank the opportunity for serving each and every one of you. Second is that, you know, from a priority standpoint, as I've said, there are two things. I mean, tactically, we need to reduce the learning loss and also focus on the mental health of teachers and students. But from a long term in 2019, also, this has been my, these two things have been my priorities, which is focusing on the special education group and also having the entrepreneurial-related programs. Special education group is very, very passionate to me because, you know, we, we just cannot focus on the 99.4% graduation, or, you know, the RSAT and ACT scores are much above the national and state level, but we need to take everybody else along with us. So, you know, I would like to continue to focus on those programs. And from the entrepreneurial programs, I think that even if a student is great academically, sports or finance, they still need to have these skills in order to move ahead, forge ahead in their lives or in the futures that they are creating for themselves. So that is the reason, you know, the, you were saying something, Justin, or?
No, sir. Go ahead, and you finish it.
Yeah, so we have the programs like incubator EDU and then YEA and then ISM, so I would like to strengthen them. Incubator EDU is available only in four high schools right now. I'd like that opportunity to be available in more than all 11 high schools, maybe the 12th high school that's coming up next year, too. So I would like to focus on these areas that will keep our students way ahead of the curve.
All right. There are, I, I've got a list of questions on property taxes I didn't get to ask, on lowering the tone in the culture wars in education. I, I didn't get to ask. There, there's a lot of things that I think people would, would want to know. And I will say that your Facebook pages are something that journalists look at quite often, so I'm sure voters do, too. But if you do have any other positions like that on those issues, that's a good place to post them, because that's where at least I go to look for, look for information. Let's start with place two and wrap things up. I want to give each of you 60 seconds to kind of sum things up. And Natalie, we will start with you, ma'am.
Okay. Public schools are the center of our democracy. Horst Mann, a pioneer of American public schools, is the 19th century famously called "education, the great equalizer of the conditions of men." We are at a pivotal moment in which public schools are under attack in an effort to privatize education using public dollars. It begs the question as to why Frisco ISD is, as to why. Frisco ISD is a well-oiled machine that continues to provide an incredible education to all kids. We include absolutely everyone with open arms, and we strive to ensure each child meets their greatest potential. We also have the highest retention rate in the state, or I'm sorry, in the region. We have the lowest tax rate in the region, which we're very proud of. We continue to, we continue to improve salaries of teachers, and our students are always succeeding. Of 16, of the 16,000 kids who were national merit semifinalists nationwide, 109 of them were from Frisco ISD. We are not a district in decline. We are a district that is progressing, making sure that every single child name and need is met.
Natalie, thank you. Kelly, 60 seconds to wrap up your thoughts for the voters here tonight, please, ma'am.
Sure. And one other thing I wanted to say about library books, I think parents should be put in control of the parameters of what they're comfortable with on their check, their children's checkout material, similarly like they did out in Richmond, Virginia. I do bring a university administration background. I also bring a tech startup company background. And I think that when you combine my educational and business and tech backgrounds, I would be a unique candidate as well as a future Board of Trustee. In closing, I want to say I'm also a community organizer and an advocate for children and families. I like going and speaking to school board meetings, city council meetings, county commissioners' meetings. And I just feel like together as a community, when we work together, we can come up with all kinds of solutions for the current problems we have. But sometimes I feel like it's time for a change and some new blood. Thank you for your time.
Kelly, thank you very much for always being punctual. We appreciate that, too. Marvin, I, I think Marvin was on for a few extra minutes. I'm not sure, Marvin, if you're still here, please let us know. I don't want to skip over you a second time if you are. Let's go to District One, and Angela will go to you for 60 seconds to wrap things up, please.
All right. So, yeah, I want to make sure that we, that, that when we talk about mental health and wellness and all that, which I know is important to everybody, and I don't, I don't at all think that there's any insincerity there. We need to make sure that we're not just adding programs and whatnot, but they're actually looking at the science and saying, what can we do to actually structure the school day around the way kids' brains work, rather than expecting their brains to work around the structure of the school day? So that's something that I am constantly thinking about how we can do better there. Also, like I said, that communication piece with parents, making sure that we are being rigorously transparent. If there's something on the agenda that is being voted on, we should be able to see an attachment of exactly what that change is. Like when we had the change with the board policy or the, the board operating procedures, the public couldn't see what was going to be changed and couldn't speak to it until that, after the fact. So being just super transparent about those sorts of things, making sure that we're genuinely bringing in parents and, and listening to their concerns. Sorry, I timed myself, but now it's distracting me. But listening to their concerns and, and bringing them in as part of the conversation rather than dismissing and pushing back, because I think that makes it worse.
Angela, thank you. Gopaul?
As I said earlier, I've been here since last 18 years, very much invested in the community. I have a nonprofit that provides scholarships to the students. The partnership with the city is very, very important, so we've been, we've brought STAR where our kids can practice in the same place, the Cowboys can, can play the same place where Cowboys practice. And then we have PGA coming up very soon. We have a PAC coming up with partnerships from the city and another third party. So I would like to have more and more of these opportunities to be available. We are adding artificial intelligence and then some of the very latest technologies through CTA to our students. So I would like to ensure that, you know, our students continue to be on the same trajectory and then, you know, get the best. Because we have a student opportunity model school district, I would like to ensure that, you know, with all the resources we have, ensure that more and more opportunities are provided to our students, so that they'll excel in the future they create.
Gopaul, thank you very much. And Dustin, you are our final candidate to speak this evening.
Thank you very much for for having me. You know, it's 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 interesting. You talk about bringing the temperature down and you know, I I hate to always talk about being a lawyer, but part of being a lawyer is 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 multitasking. And I see in the in the chats, you know, Dustin's a Democrat, Dustin's a Republican. Today, if anybody saw me at the polls, I was wearing my Republican and Democrat socks. I've got the Democrat sock on the left and the Republican sock on the right. I don't think anybody knows what I am. I don't think my wife knows what I am. You can, you can pull her aside and ask her when she's at the polls, and that's the point. The point is that when it comes to public education, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican. It doesn't matter if you're a Democrat. What matters is what are we doing for for the 66,000 kids in F I S D? What are we doing for the 8,500 staff members in F I S D? What matters is what we do for our district and how we improve our district and how we make it better. And sometimes that's going to be a Democratic idea and sometimes that's going to be a Republican idea. But at the end of the day, we've got to find the best idea. And that's what matters. And that's what we've got to focus on.
Dustin, thank you. It's a good reminder. I think everyone on this call knows, but all these municipal races, city, county, well, not necessarily county, but city, mud districts, things like that, especially school boards are nonpartisan races. But that's a good point with everything, everything being so politicized. Also, quick reminder, everyone on this call probably knows this, but early voting opened today. Candidates like Dustin, we're talking about being at the polls. It goes through Saturday and then starts back next Monday and Tuesday, I believe, before Election Day next Saturday, the week from Saturday, the 7th of May. A lot of different ideas on here. I I'm glad that you guys took some time to share these. I'm glad we didn't get mired down too much in some of the culture war stuff that was going on. I thought some of it, you know, bore narrowing in to see what was going on. But thank you for the different ideas and thanks for taking the time to be here tonight. And Hava, I will turn it back to you.
Thank you so much, Jason. You did a fabulous job moderating this forum as you always do for us. We can't thank you enough for being here. And I would like to personally thank all of you candidates and for stepping up, for taking the time out of your busy day and away from your families to be here with us tonight and share your ideas and your platforms with these voters. This is potentially important. All of our children in our community are a saint. And I know personally what it takes to step up and run for office, and I know it is no small feat. So my hats are off to you, every one of you. I wish you all the best of luck. I will repeat what Jason said, early voting started today. It will run until May the 3rd. Election Day is Saturday, May 7th. Be sure to check your county election website. If you are in Denton County, you will need to visit your Denton County polling places. And in Collin County, you will need to visit yours. Of course, if you have any questions at all regarding these candidates, feel free to reach out to them. I have myself talked to every one of them. In one way or another, they're very reachable and approachable, so I encourage everyone to do your own due diligence and get out and vote. And with that, we are going to wrap up our 2022 Frisco Democratic Club F I S D School Board of Trustees Forum. Thank you all for joining us and I hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you for hosting. I appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.